The date is November eleventh. No, I'm sorry, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. In attendance, we have myself, Don Keefe, trustee Jennifer Leon, vice president Doris Pico, our fiscal officer, Mr. Todd Bodley, our fire chief, Rich Peterson, and our lawyer, Mr. Jim Matthews. This is about tonight, we're gonna have a discussion about rental and lease being your use of our public facilities.
On, uh, when you first, when you first think about it, when I first thought about the public use of a facility, you think, why not? You know, and I guess back in the nineties, I talked to Rich some today, the township elected not to allow some birthday parties and personal use of facilities because they were worried about it got to be where messes were left behind and some liability issues, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess the policy of the township has been not to do that. But rather, if we do use it, we use it for civic events such as, you know, government issues and zoning meetings. And, um, you know, the Boy Scouts wanna use it, they try to make it into a teaching session so that there's always a fireman there that opens the building, lets them in, kinda manages the space, and then makes sure that things are clean when they leave. And then they also maybe try to teach the kids about fire or about NIMH and township or whatever at the same time, they try to make it a teaching event. So whenever someone wanted to use the facility, I found out about it yesterday, to use it for a personal Thanksgiving Day feast or whatever. You think, well, that's, why not? But then when you think about liability issues and insurance issues. So I'm a little bit torn both ways and, um, um, you know, my feeling is that the precedent was set. And that's the way it's been. Do we leave it that way? And if so, is it legal to leave it that way? I guess that's a question, we really may not know the answer tonight. But, I mean, everybody can read the revised code and you maybe interpret the way they want, but I'm not an attorney nor am I an expert on this at all, but, you know, I don't know.
I think it clearly says we have a duty to, because the community, it's community property, is it or is it not? We don't own it, we have dominion over it, and we've regulated our discretion to use. And I think the issue is, an employee asked me, would it be okay if I use, we have family coming in, we have a meeting spot? And I said, I don't see anything wrong with that, I, cuz I know, I had my grandson's birthday party at your township, and my daughter did not come before the board, it's not in your minutes that she asked permission and by resolution that you granted her approval to do so. Also, I know Union Town does it, Green Town does it, everybody does it, and all of a sudden, it was this security breach that I gave a code out, that you gave me your code, I use your code to get in that building. Don has the same code.
You have your own code.
You have your own code now, for clarity.
Well, the reason why we have a code is because we have to go to that building to sign checks that we normally have those checks brought to us, so we have no business even being in the building. So why is it a security breach if your office is locked up?
Because you gave your code to an employee.
Doesn't matter.
I felt it mattered.
Yeah, but you're singling out an employee, all employees have codes, Kelly has a code, Dawn has a code, I have a code.
We all have our own code.
Fire, every employee has a code, and that's the truth. And to single one out and say, you don't get a code, or you did something wrong, what was the breach, Todd?
I'll explain it. Thank you for an opportunity. This is Todd Fosley, the fiscal officer, for those who can't see me. Well, I was informed by my secretary or assistant that you had given Jeff Shipman, our zoning inspector, your code.
Right.
He was there to do whatever he was there to do.
Take a picture of the room.
Okay.
That's what he asked for.
Right, but if you look at the wall, we have a phone, he just picked that phone up and the dispatcher lets you in.
He's told me, he also, he's called and said, hey.
I'll let you tell your story, then I'll tell mine. Go ahead, so if you finish.
That's all, that's all that I'm aware of.
All right.
So, I know your office is locked, I know that you do leave checks out in the training room, and that's your, that's your security breach. There's routing numbers and account numbers and our vendor numbers with, with AT&T, our account numbers, they're all sprawled out on that desk, if an HVAC person comes in, electrician comes in, a delivery, a rug person, a uniform person, there's tons, tons of people in and out of that building. Jeff was not a security breach, you should have your stuff locked up or bring it to the meeting where we sign it. You leave it out on the desk, all's I need is a checking and a routing number. Any, everybody knows that, and you leave them out in front of God and everybody.
But the fire fighter isn't anybody else coming in.
Thank you, Rich.
Well.
There is not.
Building and it's only fire officials coming in.
But there's other employees in the building, Rich, you're seeing, you're gonna treat them all. I know, but we're, we're, we need to treat everybody as equals.
So I'd like to finish my story now that I've been drugged into it. I'm the fiscal officer and I moved my office to Station Three because of what I felt were security issues at this building. This is open, as you say to God and everybody, Station Three is not. Everything is on camera, everybody has their own code. When I realized you shared your code with an employee, it was my job, it's my job to notify the fire chief and the board. I did not expect your unprofessional email back from me only doing my job.
Cuz it's games, Todd, you know it, you're playing games.
Let me finish.
You do, well, but he's attacking me.
I don't understand how security of our.
As well as you, enough.
Tough, don't tell me enough, Don, don't.
The point, the point of it is, that, that is more than a fire station, that's a dispatch center for many
I know that.
different facilities, and it's under, it's under a bunch of different agencies, there's a lot of different things that have to go on. I'm gonna continue to do my job whether you send me ugly, unprofessional emails or not. I know, and that's why I'm letting you know, I'm gonna do my job, cuz that's my job, and that's all I did, I let you guys know. Let me ask you this question, George, did you know our zoning inspector was gonna be using that hall for?
I didn't know.
And Don, did you know?
Did not know.
See, neither of you knew, and so I let you know, that's all I have to say.
Well, I didn't know that I needed to make a resolution for somebody to have a turkey dinner, honestly. If I overstep, I am so sorry, but you know what? I've, I've, there's plenty that goes on in this township that never gets a resolution. You don't have the authority to tell everybody to change the security codes. You did that without a vote, Dawn calls me and says, oh, Jeff, I have, I have the voicemail on my phone that you left Jeff. You called Jeff, you said, I talked to George, I talked to Rich, and we've decided you can't have your Thanksgiving, and you're gonna cancel it. Are you allowed to call and collect votes and make a decision without a resolution? Doesn't matter, if I can't make a reservation, if I can't make a reservation for a turkey dinner, if I don't have the authority, you can't cancel it, do you understand?
How can I cancel something that was not, it was not authorized to start with?
Okay, was it authorized for you to cancel the, the dirt on Ford Street?
Not.
I'm gonna interject here.
It, it's, it's about equality, I'm really tired of everybody jumping on me over a turkey dinner. I really am. Well, all the mistakes, all the things that go around here, there's no accountability. You say that's a liability, we have a pancake breakfast, what if somebody slips and falls? What if somebody chokes on a pancake? But it's liability, it's liability.
Wait a minute, that's supervised by the firefighters, the fire department is here, it's an organized event, it's a fire prevention event. I have no control, if you let people come into the building, who's gonna, who's gonna regulate if they go into the bays? Who's gonna regulate if a suspect comes up in?
You can't get into them, you know they're locked.
Yes, you can, no, the bays are not locked, you can walk right through those doors.
I, I really, honestly, it's a, it's a, I understand.
We've never let this open like that, and I can't have the liability. You trust me, and the residents trust me, with that building and all the equipment inside, the firefighters are dependent, when they show up, that equipment's gonna be ready to go. If we're here helping kids and doing, you've been to our breakfast, they're very organized, very structured. Nobody's running around and doing that thing, can somebody trip and fall? Sure.
Yes.
But you have no control when we just let somebody use the building. Nobody's gonna be able to supervise it, nobody's gonna be able to supervise it, who's gonna make sure things get put in place? Who's gonna make sure things don't come?
Oh, stop by if it's necessary. It, it was just, you know, I thought it was a nice, I thought it was, it's a community room.
You know how many times I've had to tell people, no?
Well, you should.
Over the years, and there's a resolution on the books from the mid-nineties, but it's still a resolution that's, but I did. And if you would've called me, and Jeff knew this, because Jeff asked me.
Been to a meeting, the last three meetings, I haven't seen you, Rich.
You can pick the phone up.
I know, but I don't work for you, I don't.
But I could've told you about the resolution, Jeff knew about it because he asked me about it, and I told him, you're not, you're not provided these buildings, you're not allowed to use them, he knew that and he still went to you. He still wants you to make that, that request.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't see what the, it's, it's about a turkey dinner, it's not that I authorize some un-.
It's about the facility, I'm not criticizing you, I'm saying, I'm just telling you why we can't have it, just why.
Well, but then, we, rules are rule, liability's liability, period, and that's my point. Jim, you need to step forward here and tell me who, what, about the Ohio revised code and what it says about the use of the buildings. You, you rent your facility out.
We actually, I'll, I'll use my township as an example after I just quickly cover the code. And the quote, the code's kinda quirky for you, okay? The main provision, I have no idea why it's buried in the school section of the revised code, but you'll see the thirty-three thirteen seventy-six, I give you one, Don?
No, I did not.
Okay, I'll give you this one, but it, oh, thanks, Rich. You see that it bootstraps into the availability of buildings and it includes buildings maintained by taxation under the laws of the state. Now, that's been interpreted by the Ohio Attorney General to literally include any building that is maintained by taxation under the state. Now, theoretically, of course, that would include your town hall. You consider your other fire station your town hall too?
Yeah.
You got your town hall, you've got this building here, which could technically fall into that, fire station three, which is the one I think we're talking about, right? And any other buildings that you have under your control. Now, there are other weird provisions in this code, it does say that they shall be available for use for entertainment and education of the people, adult and youthful population, discussion of all topics tending to the development of personal character and civil welfare or for religious exercises. Uh, that's just, that's what it says, so that's what we have to deal with. Now, the other provision that's interpreted though is that such occupation shall not seriously infringe upon the original and necessary uses of the property. That's never been interpreted in a court, but again, by the Attorney General, to mean that that vests you with discretion to make determinations as a board whether opening certain buildings up would seriously infringe upon the original and necessary uses. When you have some policy in place, your rules and regulations, they do have to be fair and reasonable and applicable to everybody.
Everybody.
So, for instance.
Does that include the citizens?
Absolutely.
Well, technically, the citizens, upon application, either of an organization or at least seven people, can apply to use a town hall for a civic purpose.
But.
There, there's a separate provision of the code, which is five eleven oh-three, and I'm sorry, I didn't print that for you.
I have it right here, you want me to read it?
Well, and to summarize, that pertains more particularly to a town hall, you'll see.
Right.
So your town hall belongs to the control of the township, which means it controls, it's controlled by the board. And here it provides very clear discretion that you may rent or lease any of that property for recreational or recreational facility as you deem appropriate. Now, the way those two provisions have been read together is that if a civic group steps up and says, hey, we, there's eight of us, I don't, I have no idea why it's at least seven, there's eight of us and we have no other word, place to meet, and we wanna use your town hall to have a community meeting about whatever the topic of the day is.
The cemetery.
Yeah, whatever the topic of the day is. Then, as long as the time and the date are arranged in a fashion so as to not infringe upon the use of the building, for that purpose, you have to let them use it, okay?
But since this building was constructed as a fire station, with fire tax dollars, and its purpose was for that, it was a training room, you have living quarters, you have the kitchen area, this is, this is all tied together, and that's what it was constructed for, that's what the taxpayers voted to fund, there was no general fund money to construct that. Why would you open that up? We do it as a courtesy for the civic events, like the OVI Task Force meeting they had, or, you know, the Rotary's having a meeting there, or things like that. But they're all supervised, they're structured, and they don't impede a point process of what we're doing. Opening this up to have just anybody come in, that's gonna impede our, and I can, I did research it today, but I'll get the leads.
It wasn't just anybody, but I do have the text that you sent, that you do allow employees, family members to come in and have dinner there too.
They can come and eat with their family members.
Right, it's the same for employees.
This is supervised.
But, but it is the same, an employee's an employee, Jim.
It's not supervised.
Well, here, here, there's a lot of tricky little features in here, but the bottom line is, these two provisions had to be construed together. So the Attorney General looks at them and says, there is a clear distinction drawn in a town hall setting. And I don't know if you actually have a town hall.
Right.
Was that a ballot issue that built that building?
Well, but we've had, we've had our township meetings at each of our fire stations.
See, that's the quirky part of everything they write.
Have more here.
Well, my feeling is.
Has a specific definition.
Right, we can define a policy if this is such an egregious issue, I just didn't think, I really, you know, it's Thanksgiving, I, I don't know what else to say.
I think your situation here is just what's brought it to a dead, to me, as it's your existing policy.
It was innocent, and then all of a sudden, I opened my email and it's like, bang, bang, you can't do this, Jennifer, you don't have any authority, you shouldn't have done this. And you know, there's been a ton of things that have happened without a vote.
Yeah, I think that's purely, it's just come to a head with this particular.
It has.
But to finish, a couple of themes or thoughts about the Lexington Township example. We, for instance, don't allow our road building to be open to the public because we have determined that any such use would infringe with the original and necessary use of that property. I don't care even if we could segregate a little portion of a garage on a particular, we're not gonna do that cuz it would interfere with the use of the building. The same thing with our, our station number two, which is a fire station only. We don't even hold public things there, and we don't have it available to the public to use. Technically, our town building, our town hall building, is not a town hall because it was never a ballot issue either, but we treat it kind of as a town hall, that's where we have our meetings. And we do have a limited policy where we will allow certain people to use it if it's available. We have some rules in place, you gotta keep it clean, you gotta make sure it's clean when you leave, there's now no alcoholic beverages on the premises, that type of thing. And they sign a hold harmless agreement, kinda like the sample I gave a couple of you tonight. Just as an added measure of security, and there is a provision in the code too, that people who are entitled or given the privilege to use your facility have to agree to be responsible for any wear and tear beyond what would be ordinary, you know? It's not like you're gonna measure how much wear and tear on the carpeting or something, but they do have to be responsible for that. So construing these two provisions together, basically you have a lot of discretion for the use of your buildings, and that's by anybody. Your personnel, your residents, your civic organizations, other groups, that type of thing. The only limitation on you is if you have a responsible organization, don't ask me what that is intended to be, or at least a group of seven citizens who want to use your building for a particular civic event as expressed in here. Like we covered, for instance, there's a hot topic of the day that's come up, you know, whatever it is, school proposal or whatever, and people wanna meet at your location. Generally, you have to accommodate that as long as that event doesn't interfere directly with a particular use. So, the long and short of it is, you have the discretion to exclude people from most of your buildings if it will interfere with the uses of the building, and that's a determination for the board.
Right.
It sounds like the board already kinda made a decision years ago, you said?
A long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, they did, and.
Particularly with regard to Station Three.
It was Station Two.
Oh, two, two, two. Because of the way it functions, the way it's laid out, the access and things like that, I could see where a board could determine that this is just something that shouldn't be open generally to, for any public event.
The issue with Station Three.
Being managed by the department.
Station Three has a smaller parking lot, and I guess I just don't understand what happens, yeah, when, when somebody pulls in and they block the bay and the fire truck can't get out. A waiver's not gonna save you on that, that becomes a liability.
And see, that's, that's why, that would be another feature, I think, that goes into using your discretion as a board to determine whether or not that facility should be open for any particular uses, personnel or otherwise.
I haven't submitted it to the State of Ohio, the LEEDs board, but they may restrict it right now, there's, there's tough, tough restrictions on that facility. If you lose that LEED certification, you lose all your police agencies. Like, I can't even have, the firefighters aren't allowed to go into dispatch, that's how regulatory they are on this. So, I don't know, if I call them tomorrow and say, hey, can we use this communication center building for, you know, a community room, let people come in unsupervised, that may negate the whole thing.
Well, we've had zoning meetings there.
I wasn't in favor of it, but I gave.
But we did do that, we ate there, we had, and I was there one year, you were there.
I would suggest you go back to the township hall, because it's.
Yeah, and because of the.
Well, it's the space, it's a, it's a great space and has the.
Yeah, but I agree with, because it's the dispatch center, it's a big deal. I mean, we got a lot of, a lot of contracts and a lot of good agencies that we're in contract with.
And these are all configuration issues that he's talking about too. Our particular town hall, you saw the one main entrance that can lead off into that, everything else can be locked off.
Right.
You can't access the bay area.
And you can't access dispatch, what's the matter?
So I, I think it's just a collective judgment you need to make on whether or not these facilities are available and what terms and rules would, would regulate them. When we allow our facility to be used, a trustee is responsible for opening and closing cuz we're not obviously gonna give a key to someone.
Right.
And, uh, generally, when we know the times it's being used, a trustee will show up, open it up, go back up when it's to be closed, make sure it's reasonably clean, and take care of it, turn the lights off and lock it up.
What about them, what about people, Rich? Especially the dispatch, right?
The issue is, I don't think you have a building you can actually lock down away from all the fire equipment.
Yeah, because you have to go back in to get to the kitchen.
And what happens?
I think they, they just weren't bringing food in.
These are people that after six PM could be running around in their shorts and, and relaxing, and so now they're gonna contend with people that.
I think it's, I think it was like one to three, and these people are in their late eighties and they didn't have an access, you know, their house wasn't accessible, and they were gonna have a quick drop, the turkey, eat, and leave, but that's all.
Restrictions you have on twos is the septic system, so we were forced to either spend a hundred and some thousand dollars for the septic system or they had to put restrictions on it, which is why they ended up moving the township offices out. We can only have up to two firefighters working the twenty-four hour shifts and two trustees meetings a month is what we're limited on there. Otherwise, if you get too many people in there, it backs up and you have raw sewage all throughout that facility.
You need a commercial system to replace it.
So we didn't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars, and the Stark County Board of Health gave us that perimeter. So, in Station One, you can't hold public meetings in that meeting room because there's no ADA accessibility. It just has two staircases.
Oh, it's upstairs, you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, so you have a lot of features that kinda relate to that, what infringes upon the necessary uses of the. Just a, you have physical problems with that layout, that type of thing? And I think you've been given, again, some pretty good feedback from the fiscal officer and the fire chief about it. Doesn't mean you have to have an absolute refusal on all your properties, you, your, your policy could simply, you take it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
I'd still recommend it even if you do it on a case-by-case basis, that you have some type of agreement. Doesn't have to be an elaborate agreement, just authorization by the board or release of hold harmless.
Anybody have anything else from the public?
I personally, personally, I have to be honest, my son is a fireman, and I know they're, they have bedrooms up there and they gotta get dressed fast and run out for an emergency. Personally, I wouldn't like, if I was them, I wouldn't like somebody downstairs having a dinner, I, I just have to be honest about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just have one last thing too, I mean, things you wanna think about with this kinda stuff is, like, what if someone brought bedbugs in? You may think that, you may think that, that sounds crazy, right?
It's a real deal.
It's a real deal, if you're in real estate, you know bedbugs are a real deal. And, uh, and that's, that's something to be considered because that, that would actually, we'd have to do whole treatments and all kinds of things there. That may be a little far-fetched, but it may not be as far as things go these days. The firemen live there, I mean, we count on them just to accommodate us, and there's millions of dollars of equipment there, and, you know, kids are kids, and you let them out and they love fire trucks and they start playing with something, and there's just, there's too many problems, this is not well thought out, and if you wanna do that, you could coordinate with the firemen, you know, and move, maybe move the trucks out of one of the bays at some point, or do something like that. Or offer the people that need a place to do, you know, offer them your house, or a garage, or do something like that, that's an idea.
Yeah, I did offer them, I have a facility, I don't have a restroom in there.
Yeah.
It just wasn't gonna work, I made a couple of phone calls and I'm still waiting a couple of calls back for this person in particular to, uh, use another facility, and we'll wait to see, not see if I can help them out, but, um, and I don't know if we wanna make a, we need to make a vote?
Sounds to me like, right now, you have a policy in place that doesn't allow.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna look back, Rich, Rich has got a ton of knowledge, and he's been, he's been around for a long time. And if in the nineties he had problems with it, uh, something had to set that precedence for them to pass that.
Extremely difficult to manage, you don't have the firefighters and the personnel to point at this, you're gonna have to pay somebody to come stand by, and, and then it gets into the he said, she said, and I can't get guys to come to work. I mean, that's, we're gonna find people to do this. And the last couple of times that they've used that for that zoning thing, our guys had to come in the next day, clean everything up, empty the trash cans, do the dishes in the sink, and I'm all over them for doing that kinda stuff. It's a hard slap in the face for them to come back and do it, and, and, and you're gonna have that no matter who we put up there and unsupervised. So there's just a lot, and the DEA issues, I gotta pull our licenses and see about the drugs, I mean, you have narcotics in the back of those ambulances. What, you, you know, I can look and see what the restrictions we apply for the licensing, the secured facility, so there's a lot more to it than, than just a room to rent out.
Right.
Well, we weren't talking about burning on a regular basis, this is just a one-off, a really true.
But if you do it once, you gotta continue.
Like the law says, you can't discriminate, though, I think you need to dig a little bit deeper in it. Like overall, it's, it's public funds, period, it's not our, I'm not saying, I'm just being devil's advocate, it's a public fund.
Like I said, you can't walk into Stark County Sheriff's Office and do that.
Oh, I understand that, I, of course not.
Challenges before, that it's, you know, I paid for that fire truck, I can take and drive it, no, you can't.
No, you can't, I, we get that, I, I'm not advocating any of that, this is just.
That's why we, we've always tried to, for civic things, we said, okay, as a courtesy, we would do that.
Right.
We could've just said, no, I don't do any of it, but when you just start going down the.
It's just anti-community, in my opinion, to not, it really, you know, I'm sorry.
What it was built for, and voters passed levies to pay for that, the crews agreed to work in that environment that was built for a fire station for the firefighters, and that's their home, and if you haven't worked twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours in a shift, you'd really appreciate, they don't get to go anywhere, it's, that's their home. So when people come from the outside, we're very cognizant of, you know, hey, this is their space, they need downtime, this is their time to relax and, and rejuvenate. So, I just, there's a lot more to it.
I get it, but it is funded by the taxpayers, so that's, this is the most important aspect of it, it just is.
But again, it's written in a very poorly fashion, I mean, technically, this would extend to everything.
Absolutely.
Us as a group right now, are there eight of us?
Yeah.
There's probably enough of us to right now make a request to use the state house, right, for something.
Well, and then you, you know, brings up a good point, when you watch these TV shows and you wonder how people are allowed to be on, you know, the Capitol steps and burn a flag, you think, what the world, you know, why are they letting them do that? Well, it's public, yada, 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 and they're allowed and not, you know, I get it.
That's a First Amendment issue, gives them some reasonable use of that. But again, I can guarantee you, if we made a request to use the state house, it's gonna be flatly denied. They're not gonna accommodate us, they'll find a room to pigeonhole us in for any purpose, whether it's a dinner or not. Just because it interferes with their ordinary operation, and you can take it to any extreme, you used the example of sheriff's office. I'm sure I can't use the courthouse anytime.
Right.
Be kinda neat to have a birthday party in the McKinley courtroom though, but I'm sure they're not gonna let me do that.
Well, I just feel like there's a difference between civil, like, to have a meeting for issue or something,
Yeah, for something that's come up.
And personals, different, they're different, two separate things.
Right.
I, I just don't think that the room should be used for birthday parties or dinners, or, I just don't think so. I think if you have a get-together to, if you wanna organize for an issue, any issue, that's fine, but these are government offices and I just don't think they should be used for personal use.
But a lot of the, the other.
Municipalities.
They do it, but I'm just saying, cuz it's their way.
But they may.
I know, but we're taxpayers, we're paying.
They may have that town halls.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
It has to be clean, they're using electricity, and, you know, all this is coming about, and who's paying for it?
Right, well, the, the theory is you would rent the space, you know?
Yeah, others have gone to like a community room.
Exactly.
Where it is a structured, structured type of rental type of thing, right?
Exactly, that's all.
And then you get the pushback from private entities that say you're just competing with them, so you're harming commerce of your community.
They should've used Eagles, they're taking our money, you know, yeah. They should've used the Eagles, they're taking our money, you know, yeah.
There's a big mixed bag in this.
I don't know what the city of Louisville does, if they have anything, you know? City of Louisville have any, you know?
They have them.
Yeah, the Constitution Center, but I don't know if you can use it.
Article building, the boy don't like nothing. They used to play poker, euchre, and they're the old guys, and they threw them out, so, to the Eagles. Do we need to do anything?
You, I, I, I'm, I'm at the point, I think we just, uh, leave the, uh, resolution as it is.
What is the resolution? We don't have a copy of it.
And I don't know. I'm not, I, I don't wanna refer to something that I don't know how it reads, but, you know, I, I think for now, I think we keep our policy what it's been.
Yeah. Right. I don't either.
And, uh, it's used for, you know, civic, and, uh, I, you know, case-by-case civic governmental occurrences, if they need to use it for those, those different, you know, zoning meetings and.
Case-by-case to the board, yeah.
You know, town hall meetings and that kinda thing, or, or civic groups that they need an emergency space or a space. Most of them use a space. I know downtown Louisville, there's spaces above these buildings that people use all the time, you know? So, uh, some of those offices there, so there's places for people to meet. But when you start talking food, and then restrooms, and then kids, parking, you know, all that fixings that go along with it, I think it opens up a whole other can of worms that it becomes a lot different than having a meeting with twenty people.
Sure.
That's my personal opinion. So, uh, I'm understanding that I just leave it as it is. Um, you know, the person that wants to use it for Thursday, you know, I'll see if I can find him another venue or something to help him out in that regard. Um, if anybody has any ideas, let me know. But, you know, and I'm not trying to kick anybody in the ear for Thanksgiving either. It's not my intent, nor is it yours.
I know. It's, it's a shame. It really is. It's embarrassing, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Anything, Dawn?
Oh, I'm with you. I don't, looking forward to change.
We don't need to.
No, it doesn't sound like it.
You know, it's, maybe as it is.
Okay. But it's, I mean, it brings up good discussion, and, and I think we need to have good discussion with this township
Absolutely.
to move forward in, in positive ways. And this is something we need to, it's gotta be keeping our ear, ear to the ground a little bit, and, you know, planning out some things, and maybe there's a way we can help people locate a service and locate one of these things. So.
If we had a fault community building would be real nice.
Yeah.
Can I say something? I had, for my son, for his wedding, I had to rent the Eagles at one time, and another time I had to rent the Fault Center. They require you to have a certain amount of people, and they, they limit it. I mean, if you was to ask them for ten more people, they flat out say, no, we don't have enough facility here. We don't, for safety. They give you a sheet of paper, and I'm telling you, there are a lot of rules to rent those places.
Yeah, liabilities.
Well, a lot of the churches too will.
A lot of the churches do civics. I mean, you're exactly right.
Well, no, I mean, even like this Thanksgiving thing, you might check if the, with one of the churches, because a lot of them, if they have a gym, or if they have something, they'll, they'll.
Paradise, they do a lot for.
Yeah, Paradise does a lot of stuff for the civic groups. Okay. Well, there's nothing else. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion is second. voting please. George?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Okay.
Readings adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.